Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of the council is present. This council will now come to order. Members will please take their seats. Visitors will retire to the seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes my good friend, Iman Sutradine Mohammed of Najjid Mohammed. He is here today as the guest of councilmember Nina Ahmad. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
Before I pray, I just wanted to say just a couple of words. One of the things is, is that there are 109,000 cities in the United States of America, and Philadelphia is the sixth biggest city, right? There's 1.6 million people in the city of Philadelphia, and there are only 17 councilpeople, right? That's a unique group, very unique, and we should not take that for granted. Also, in line with our mayor, and may God grant her success, that I'm tired, just like her, of hearing people say that Philadelphia is the dirtiest city or Philadelphia, you know? Just like I'm also tired of them boasting the negative numbers of our city: poorest, biggest city in the country, highest murder rate in the history of the city, you know, highest gentrified city, poverty level, you know? So I'm tired of them boasting those numbers. One of the things is, is that they said to the prophet, peace be upon him, they said, prophet, right? They said that this guy, he prays all the time. He always prayed. And he said to them, right? He said, well, who takes care of him? They said, we do. And he said, then you all are better than him. Meaning that prayer alone won't change anything, right? We gotta do more than prayer. It takes prayer, and it also takes good work. And at this time, I want to pray for our mayor. I want to pray for our city council members. I want to pray for our city. I want to pray for our country, as well as our world. There's a prayer that I make 10 times a day. And I always ask God to bless all the children and families around the world who have no food to eat and no place to live, right? Because if we can't help them, at least we can do our prayer for them. So at this time, let us pray. Ode billahim in the shaytan the regime, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirobbil alameen. Arahmanirrahim Mary kiyo middein. Iyyaka na abudu wa iyyaka na stain. Hidina syroot al mustaqim. Syroot al lazinen amta'alehem. Gairu maqdubiyalihim waladholin. Walas innal sanilafikos. Ilad adina amin o wa aminu soli hati wa tawasobir haqki wa tawasobisab. Rabanatina fadunya hasanu wa firaknitan hasanu wa kina ra habanah. What I said, it translates into English with the name of God, most gracious, most merciful. Praise be to God, the Lord's sustainer and cherisher of all the worlds, master of the day of judgment. Thee do we worship and thine aid do we seek. We ask that you show us the straight way, the way of those whom Thou hast bestowed thy grace, those whose portion is not wrath and who go not astray. By the token of time through the ages, verily, man is in loss, except for those who have faith. Do good deeds and righteous works, and invite others to the truth with patience and constancy. O God, we ask that you make us successful in this life, as well as the next, and that you bless all of the children and families around the world who have no food to eat and no place to live, and that you bless our mayor of this great city, that you bless our councilmembers of this great city, and that you allow us to turn this city around. Because we know that you say the eyes of the world is on Philadelphia, and when Philadelphia come together, the world will come together. God bless you all. Amen.
The chair thanks to Iman for his invocation. The council will now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April the 4th, 2024. The chair recognizes councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 4th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April the 4th of 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councilmember O'Rourke.
Minority, a leave of absence is requested for councilmember Brooks.
Thank you. The chair grants the leave of absence. The chair now recognizes councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of city council, I welcome you. We welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes councilmember Jamie Gardiere, who will present a resolution honoring and recognizing Dr. Caitlin Carrico and Dr. Drew Weissman for winning the 2023 Nobel Prize in Medicine. Would Dr. Weissman and those accompanying him please join the councilmember at the podium? Joining councilmember Gardiere will be councilmember Rue Landau, councilmember Nina Ahmad, councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, councilmember Squiller, and councilmember Mike Driscoll. The chair recognizes councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, everyone. I've been anticipating this presentation for a long time, and I'm really glad that it's finally here. When COVID-19 struck and we went into lockdown, experts predicted that we may be social distancing for years because at that point, the average vaccine took more than a decade to develop. So the only reason we are here today, back to doing the people's business completely in person, is thanks to Dr. Drew Weissman and his partner, Dr. Catalin Carrico, who innovated a safe, effective, enlightening, fast method to develop and manufacture vaccines. To be sure, the pandemic changed our city and our world's trajectory, and our communities are still dealing with the consequences. But we are well along the road to recovery, and I shudder to think about how many more lives we would have lost and how much more catastrophic the economic damage would have been if Dr. Weissman and Dr. Carrico did not find a way to free us from COVID-19's chokehold sooner than anyone could have imagined in March of 2020. To me, Dr. Weissman and Dr. Carrico's accomplishment is about much more than fighting COVID. Ever since Benjamin Franklin flew his kite during a stormy Philadelphia day in June 1752, Philadelphia has been on the cutting edge of science. Dr. Weissman and Dr. Carrico's transformative mRNA technology continued this trend by demonstrating the prowess of our burgeoning life sciences industry. Other scientists here and across the world have already started building off this pair's research to develop mRNA therapeutics that will treat and cure diseases like HIV, Ebola, and malaria. So while Dr. Weissman and Dr. Carrico may have already received science's highest honor, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank them for the impact that they have had specifically on our city, both when it comes to saving lives and reminding the globe that good things happen in Philadelphia. With that, we will now read the resolution. Whereas, Dr. Catalin Carrico is a senior vice president at Biontech and an adjunct professor of neurosurgery at the University of Pennsylvania's Perlman School of Medicine. Dr. Carrico received her bachelor's degree in biology in 1978 and her doctorate in biochemistry in 1982 from the University of Sesged in her native Hungary. She was working at the Biological Research Center of the Hungarian Academy of Sciences in Sesged before immigrating to the United States in 1985 and...
Whereas, Dr. Drew Weissman is the Roberts Family Professor in Vaccine Research at the University of Pennsylvania's Perlman School of Medicine. Before joining Penn in 1997, Dr. Weissman was a fellow at the National Institutes of Health studying HIV in the lab of Dr. Anthony Fauci. Dr. Weissman received his bachelor's degree and master's degree from Brandeis University. Dr. Weissman earned his M.D. and Ph.D. from Boston University and completed his residency at Beth Israel Hospital and...
Whereas, after a chance meeting in the late 1990s while photocopying research papers, Dr. Carrico and Dr. Weissman began investigating mRNA as a potential therapeutic. In 2005, they published a key discovery: mRNA could be altered and delivered effectively into the body to activate the body's protective immune system. And whereas mRNA-based vaccines elicited a robust immune response, including high levels of antibodies that attack a specific infectious disease that had not previously been encountered. Unlike other vaccines, a live or attenuated virus is not injected or required at any point. And...
Whereas, when the COVID-19 pandemic struck, the true value of the pair's lab work was revealed in the timeliest of ways as companies worked to quickly develop and deploy vaccines to protect people from the virus. And whereas, both Pfizer, Biontech, and Moderna utilized Dr. Carrico and Dr. Weissman's technology to build highly effective vaccines that protected recipients from severe illness and death due to COVID-19. And...
Whereas, in the United States alone, more than 655 million total doses of SARS-CoV-2 mRNA vaccines have been administered since they became available in December 2020. Whereas, Dr. Carrico and Dr. Weissman continued to work on new therapeutic applications of mRNA and... Whereas, on October 2nd, 2023, Dr. Carrico and Dr. Weissman received the Nobel Prize in Medicine from the Nobel Assembly in Solna, Sweden. They are the 28th and 29th Nobel laureates with ties to the University of Pennsylvania, including nine who won the Nobel Prize in Medicine. And whereas, not only did Dr. Carrico and Dr. Weissman groundbreaking research save countless lives, it also showed the entire world the proudness and importance of Philadelphia's burgeoning life science industry. Therefore...
Being resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes Catalin Carrico, Ph.D., and Drew Weissman, M.D., Ph.D., for winning the 2023 Nobel Prize in Medicine. Further resolved and gross copies of this resolution be presented to Catalin Carrico, Ph.D., and Drew Weissman, M.D., Ph.D., as a token of this body's respect and appreciation. Now I would like to invite Dr. Drew Weissman to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm highly honored to be here. I think what I want to say most is to thank the city of Philadelphia for its support of the University of Pennsylvania, its support of biomedical research, and its support of Catalin and I. Without Philadelphia, neither of us would have been here, would have accomplished the RNA vaccine that treated the pandemic. So I have to thank Philadelphia for being a great and powerful supporter of biomedical research. I want to thank Philadelphia also for what's going to come in the future. We continue to develop new RNA therapies. We're developing gene therapies to treat sickle cell anemia and other stem cell disorders. We're developing new vaccines for diseases that previously couldn't be easily treated with a vaccine, including HIV, hepatitis C, malaria, tuberculosis, and many others. And there are literally thousands of other diseases that we and others are working on that we hope someday RNA therapies will be able to effectively treat, prevent, or cure. Thank you very much.
And last, we will hear from Jonathan Epstein, interim executive vice president of the University of Pennsylvania for the health system and dean of Penn's Perlman School of Medicine.
Mr. President, distinguished counselors and guests, it's a real honor to be here today. The mRNA vaccines, like so many other discoveries in medicine, appeared, it seemed, out of nowhere. But they were really 20 years in the making. Doctors Carrico and Weissman toiled away, struggling for research funding, struggling for recognition because they knew they were on to something. And many others in the scientific field had tried to use mRNA as a therapeutic platform, but they'd been stymied because RNA elicits an immune response itself, which destroys the RNA. And what Catty Carrico and Drew Weissman discovered was how to modify the RNA so that it could be used as a medical therapy. And they've saved millions of lives. But it's only the beginning. As Dr. Weissman just told us, this is a new therapeutic platform, and we're eager to see Philadelphia lead the way in making many new medicines in the future. So thank you so much for this resolution today.
Congratulations to all of you. And next, I invite all councilmembers and all of our guests from the University of Pennsylvania to come and take a photo.
Council will now be at ease. The chair recognizes councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Before I provide you with my one privileged resolution today, I just want to say just a brief 30-second remarks. There are police captains, and then there are police captains. Captain, now deputy commissioner Maisha Massey is an exemplar of a commanding officer who served. And as she is here with us today... I also want to briefly take 30 seconds to acknowledge that from working with, we're going to have a stench remarks later, but from working with councilwoman Kathy Gilmore Richardson and other city councilmembers to shut down public nuisances, to ensuring that north and northwest Philadelphia had outstanding quality of life, from making sure that boats, abandoned vehicles, and other nuisances in our neighborhood were rid of, and to also making sure that our mayor's plan, which he's already was working on before the mayor made this a big plan, community policing was a priority. She did it all, which is why she was not only selected to be the first woman captain of the 35th district, but that's why she was selected to hold this, her new title, her new promotion as the first deputy commissioner of community partnerships for the city of Philadelphia, where she will be responsible for unveiling the community policing plan in the city. So I just want to thank all of her family. If I can have all of her family stand as well. Especially... Especially deputy commissioners' husband, Mr. Massey. I want to thank you for giving her to the city of Philadelphia because she's always responsive to cause. So myself and councilwoman Cindy Bass, we're co-introducing a legislation, a resolution today to honor and recognize our deputy commissioner, almost said captain, Maisha Massey, and you will hear from her shortly, but I wanted to say, in case anyone had to leave, that we love you, we thank you, and you already know many, much of all of council. So thank you, city of Philadelphia. Let's give her a warm round of applause again. And with that said, I have...
The next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant and armed deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk.
To the president and the members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body the following proposed ordinance: An ordinance authorizing the city's chief innovation officer or their designee to enter into a cable television franchise renewal agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC, renewing the cable television franchise granted to the, by the city to Verizon for franchise areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the city, all under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 708, 710, 714, and 723 North Sedgwick Street, located in the 3rd councilmatic district in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. End a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Mill Creek urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 607 North 53rd Street, 625, 633, 635, and 637 North 53rd Street, and authorizing the redevelopment authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Liberty 53 LP and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract. Council President, there are no other communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair now recognizes councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and the viewing public. I have one privilege resolution honoring captain, now deputy commissioner Massey.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Good morning, President. Good morning, Council President. Today I have one privilege and two non-privileged resolutions.
Will the clerk please read the title of the one privilege and one non-privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Housing Neighborhood Development and the Homeless and Public Property and Public Works to hold hearings on the 10-year performance of the Philadelphia Land Bank, what barriers exist to effective application review, process efficiency and transparent communication, and how these can be solved to maximize this unique opportunity to create genuinely affordable housing and community-stewarded green spaces for neighborhoods that need them most.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 708, 710, 714, and 723 North Sedgwick Street located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Mill Creek Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 607, 625, 633, 635, and 637 North 53rd Street, and authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Liberty 53 LP, and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract. Council President, there are no other communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and the viewing public. I have one privilege resolution honoring Captain, now Deputy Commissioner Massey.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privilege resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Dawn Staley, Coach of the University of South Carolina Gamecocks... For leading the undefeated 38-0 Gamecocks to victory in the 2024 NCAA's Women's Basketball Championship, her second championship in three seasons and third championship in her coaching career.
In the spirit of our predecessor, Darrell Clark, she from North Philly. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Just for the record, Council President, that resolution is being co-introduced with the 5th District North Philly Councilperson, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. North Philly with an F. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two privileged resolutions and one bill signed on by nine members of council.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the privilege resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Philly Girl's Jump and further declaring May 4th, 2024, and every first Saturday in May thereafter, Philly Double Dutch Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., Pennsylvania Chapter, on the occasion of their annual Legislative Day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair...
And an ordinance amending Chapter 10-2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes to expand the scope of qualifying crimes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. First of all, happy 100 days, and second of all, I have two privileged resolutions to introduce.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Royal Izakaya Jesse Ido for his nomination as a finalist for a 2024 James Beard Award.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Circadium Circus School as the first accredited circus school in the United States.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., Pennsylvania Chapter, on the occasion of their annual Legislative Day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 10-2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes to expand the scope of qualifying crimes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. First of all, happy 100 days, and second of all, I have two privileged resolutions to introduce.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Royal Izakaya Jesse Ido for his nomination as a finalist for a 2024 James Beard Award.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Circadium Circus School as the first accredited circus school in the United States.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I, today I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the establishment of a special committee on Kensington to analyze and examine the effectiveness of current policies to further develop data-driven solutions and restore stability in the Kensington area.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Montgomery Avenue, 10th Street, Gerard Avenue, and 13th Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, I have one non-privileged resolution I'm now doing on your behalf.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution expressing council support for food service workers at the Philadelphia Sports Complex and urging Aramark to negotiate fair and equitable contracts that provide these workers with a standard minimum wage and health care coverage.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Offer one bill and one privilege resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the 8th District Rebuild Community Development Partners, Nice Town CDC and Allegheny West Foundation, for their hard work in revitalization of communities in their respective neighborhoods.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for the consideration in our next session of council.
And an ordinance granting permission to Germantown Jewish Center to demarcate the boundaries of Germantown E-Rub District, to construct and maintain a clear nylon cord and/or plastic tubes and other ancillary facilities, including a maximum of 10 poles along, over, and in certain public rights-of-way, and city streets, and/or to attach such demarcation facilities to existing owned, facilities owned by other entities authorized by other city ordinances, subject to such owners' consent, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Maad.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privilege resolution.
Clerk, please read the title of the privilege resolution.
A privileged resolution urging the United States Government to take immediate action to protect and enshrine reproductive rights and ensure abortion access for all birthing people.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions introduced today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills, resolutions today.
The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
The Chief Clerk, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which was referred Bill Number 240012, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Queen Lane, Wissahican Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard Extended, and Henry Avenue," and to amend Section 14-524 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled FDO 4th District Overlay District, and make related changes, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And the Committee on Rules, to which was referred Bill Number 240066, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Wood Street, 4th Street, Vine Street, and Larn Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And the Committee on Rules, to which was referred Bill Number 240159, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Sedgwick Street, Ardley Street, Uppsle Street, Bellfield Avenue, and Sprague Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading on this day of the following two bills, Number 240066 and 240159. Bill Number 240012 to be placed on next week's first reading calendar.
It has been moved in propriety, second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of the day of Bills Number 240066 and 240159. Bill Number 240012 will be placed on next week's first reading calendar. All those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes hev it, and these two bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out 21 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk, please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, to which was referred Bill Number 240021, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Gravers Lane and Millman Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 240022, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Rockland Street and North Second Street, Larn Street and Rockland Street, Ruscombe Street and North Second Street, Ashdale Street to North Third Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 240086, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Sections 1 and 2 of an Ordinance Bill Number 170086, approved May 22 to 2017," entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 269 by Relocating Portions of the House Lines and curb lines of Convention Avenue from 34th Street to Health Sciences Drive, and Placing on the City Plan Two Rights-of-Way Drainage Purposes Within the City, Within the Vicinity of Intersection Convention Avenue and Health Sciences Drive, and Authorizing Acceptance of the Grant to the City of the Said Rights-of-Way for Drainage Purposes, all under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the City of the beds of the areas proposed to be placed on the City Plan as portions of Convention Avenue, by adding additional necessary City Plan changes and revising the terms and conditions stated therein." Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 240090, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Old York Road and Cortlandt Street and Loudoun Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240100, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations, One Way Regulations, and a Closure of the Public Right-of-Way to Motor Traffic Regulation in the Vicinity of Washington Avenue from 4th Street to Water Street," all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240121, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachment in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 2401 East Norris Street," all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240122, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Norris Street Holdings LLC to Install, Own, and Maintain a Stretery in the Right-of-Way Adjacent to 2401 East Norris Street, Philadelphia PPA 19125-2913," under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240123, "An Ordinance Authorizing Pat Oliveri, DBA Pat's King of Steaks, to Vend from a Location in the Right-of-Way Adjacent to Pat's Steak's Location in the Vicinity of 9th and Wharton Streets, under certain terms and conditions," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable Bill Number 240155, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of North 20th Street and Fairmount Avenue, Tioga Street and Old York Road, West Moreland Street and North 13th Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240156, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of North 30th Street and Master Street, North 29th Street and Master Street, and Oxford Street, Oxford Street and North 30th Street, and North 29th Street, North 15th Street and Parrish Street, Swain Street, and North 17th Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240158, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 12-900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Parking Regulations and Penalties by Providing for Parking Prohibitions for Motor Vehicles with Sun Screening Devices and for Penalties and Enforcements, all under certain terms and conditions," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240186, "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Pacific Street and North Broad Street, North 13th Street and Allegheny Avenue, Marbaugh Street and Thompson Street, North 4th Street and Master Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240188, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Montrose Street between South 7th Street and South 8th Street, Montrose Street between South 9th Street and South 10th Street, Montrose Street between South 10th Street and South 11th Street, Beulah Street between Montrose Street and Carpenter Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240189, "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of South 12th Street between Jackson Street and Wolf Street, Emily Street between South 6th Street and South 5th Street, Whitney Street between South 5th Street and South 6th Street, Mercy Street between South 5th Street and South 6th Street, Siegel Street between South 5th Street and South 6th Street, South 4th Street between Mifflin Street and McKean Street, McKean Street between South 5th Street and South 6th Street, Siegel Street between South 5th Street and South 4th Street, South 3rd Street between Mifflin and McKean Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240190, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Jackson Street between South 12th Street and South 13th Street, Snyder Avenue between South 13th Street and Juniper Street, Jackson Street between South 6th Street and South 7th Street, Mercy Street between South 7th Street and South 8th Street, Watkin Street between South 11th Street and South 12th Street, South 7th Street between Johnston Street and Oregon Avenue, Moyamensing Avenue between South 5th Street and South 6th Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240212, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a Parking Regulation on Green Street and North 40th Street, North 41st Street, and Spring Garden Street, North 41st Street and Palton Avenue, North 32nd Street and Haverford Avenue, Brandywine Street and North 36th Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 240213, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Rickobin Patel, Owner and Operator of the New Stand at the Northwest Corner of 30th and Market Street, to Construct, Use, and Maintain Conduents in, Under, and Across the Northwest Corner of 30th and Market Streets for the Purpose of Supplying Electrical Service to Said New Stand, under certain terms and conditions," respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And finally, 24021214, "An North Establishing a Parking Regulation on Hazel Avenue and South 55th Street, Cedar Avenue and South 51st Street, Cedar Avenue and South 55th Street, Hazel Avenue and South 46th Street, Hazel Avenue and South 47th Street, Hazel Avenue and South 48th Street, St. Bernard Street and Pine Street, St. Bernard Street and Spruce Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. Nope, not done. Sorry. Bill Number 240217, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Parrish Street between North 16th Street and North 17th Street, Perkyomen Street between Vineyard Street and North 19th Street, Grad Street between Jefferson Street and Harland Street, Cambridge Street between North 30th Street to a Dead End..." Street, Cambridge Street Between North 30th Street to a Dead End, Jefferson Street Between North 18th Street and North 19th Street, Newkirk Street Between Thompson Street and Style Street, Brown Street Between North 16th Street and North 15th Street, Seabird Street Between North 24th Street and North 25th Street, Flora Street Between North 29th Street and North 30th Street, Olive Street Between Shirley Street and North 19th Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. 240218, "In Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Watts Street Between Cambria and Rush Street, Camack Street Between Cambria Street and Glenwood Avenue, Cambria Between North 13th to North 12th Street, Silver Street Between North 13th Street and Broad Street, Rush Street Between North 12th Street and North 13th Street, North 12th Street Between Cambria Street and Somerset Street, Marvin Street Between Sesquahanna Avenue and Diamond Street, Thompson Street Between North 27th Street and North 28th Street, Montgomery Avenue Between Uber Street and North 20th Street, North 19th Street Between Montgomery Street and Burke Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And finally, the Committee on Streets and Services to which was referred Bill Number 240219, entitled "In Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Bailey Street Between Poplar Street and Parrish Street, North 20th Street Between Oxford Street and Jefferson Street, North 27th Street Between Gerard Avenue and Thompson Street, Folsom Street Between North 18th Street and North 19th Street, Uber Street Between Parrish Street and Poplar Street, North 19th Street Between Master Street and Jefferson Street, Harold Street Between North 22nd Street and North 23rd Street," respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Another second. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey Day Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading on this day of bills' numbers, 240021, 240022, 240086, 240090, 240100, 240121, 240122, 240123, 240155, 240156, 240158, 240087, 240015, and 240017, that were just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
John threw me off. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the bills just read by Councilmember Young. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a report from the Committee on the Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to which was referred Bill Number 240088, entitled "In Ordinance Amending Chapter 9-2300 of the Philadelphia Code, Protection of Displaced Contract Workers, to Provide Protection for Service Employees, Including Laid-Off Employees, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as with the first reading this day of Bill Number 240088 that was just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of Bill Number 240088. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 240088 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. I want to also correct the record that Bill introduced by Councilmember Nina Amat urging the United States Government to take immediate action to protect and enshrine reproductive rights and ensure abortion access for all birthing people is a non-privilege resolution and will be placed on a final passage calendar for consideration on our next session of The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that from the bills just reported from the committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are on the second reading and final passage calendar for today. Numbers 240251, 240020A, 240066, 240176, 240177, 240178, 240087, 240015, and 240017.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit due to our volume of public comments will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Deputy Commissioner Massey.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just want to say thank you so much. I appreciate this honor and opportunity. It was truly a partnership when I was the commanding officer in the 35th, so it was rightfully so I should be the deputy commissioner of community partnership. It has always been my goal to ensure that all the citizens of Philadelphia are safe, and so now I get that opportunity to do it citywide. Growing up as a little girl in North Philadelphia, I'm unapologetic about representing my community. My community knows I'm boots on the ground, so you'll see me, councilmembers, all over your district with my boots on the ground and the people that I serve, and I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. The Chair now -- will the Chief Clerk please call the next person?
Quebilla Devine.
Quebilla Devine, good morning.
Good morning.
I am the founder and CEO of the Educational Advocates, reaching today's hard-working students, a committee person, chair of the Netcoa Seven Cab, a member of the current school board's parent and community advisory committee, and advisor to parent power. Here to support -- to speak in support of Resolution 240251 introduced by Councilperson Phillips. Research confirms that when caring adults are engaged in students' learning, the child performs better academically, despite the race, culture, income, or zip code of the family. When selecting members of the task force, I urge that we consider the social identities not only of ourselves but also of the most wretched caregivers we seek to assist. As we look out the window to hold caregivers accountable, we should also look in the mirror to check our cultural competency and see how we hold ourselves accountable. There are currently 20 community schools in Philadelphia. Who holds the community school coordinators accountable by ensuring that they are supporting and strengthening community partnerships and promote learning opportunities for students, families, and neighbors? Who monitors district schools to ensure that Dr. Watlington's Accelerate Philly Strategic Plan, requiring trusting relationships and collaboration with families and community stakeholders, is being implemented with fidelity, especially in low-income neighborhoods? While working collectively to build One Philly, the formation of a parent and guardian task force to help low-income families get the needed training and information to better advocate for their children is applauded. Yet the struggle for effective school, family, and community partnerships continues. Please be reminded that many families are sending their children to the same neighborhood school that failed them. A one-size-fits-all approach is not recommended. Thank you, Council President Johnson, Councilperson Phillips, and your team, all city councilpersons, and the Chief Clerk's office. You all are appreciated.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please call the next person?
Shawna Kennedy.
My name is Shayna Kennedy. I'm the executive director of Circadium. As I take a moment to thank City Council for your resolution today recognizing our circus school, I'm accompanied by one of the graduates of our program, Josh Moser, who came to Circadium from New York and is now enriching the local performing arts community with his talent. On behalf of my faculty, students, alumni, and board of directors, thank you for welcoming us here today. We're thrilled at the chance to connect with the leaders of our city and to show you that circus, which was once just on the fringe of the arts community, is on the rise here. Our campus in West Mountain area is home to acrobats, aerialists, jugglers, unicyclists, and tight-wire walkers honing their craft and learning the profession. Our program is unique in the United States, and it's one more way that Philadelphia is proving itself to be a fertile ground for the performing arts. Philadelphia is a city of firsts, home to the first lending library in the U.S., the nation's first zoo, and the world's first computer. As America's first school for higher education for circus, and now the first accredited circus school, Circadium is proud to be added to that list. You may not know that Philadelphia was home to the very first circus performance in the United States in 1793. There's a marker for it at 12th and Market Streets. But a lot has changed in our city and in the world of circus over the last 231 years. And we're here to tell you that circus is evolving into a contemporary art form led by young artists, and as we support them, we support the creative economy of our city. Thank you, Councilmember Lando, and the co-sponsors of this resolution, and to all of you here today.
Will the Clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Robert Hope.
First, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the 35th District to Deputy Commissioner Massey for her unwavering support to the community, the 35th District, and the residents. 35th District has roughly about 153,000 members in community in our district, and no matter what time in the hours, whether it be 2:00 in the morning of losing sleep or coming in at 2:00 in the afternoon, she was always there to support the community. The 35th District might have lost her in the 35th, but she's in the city, and she's going to be there to support everybody and every community member, from the babies to the seniors. She will definitely be there to help everybody. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. President, and everyone in City Council. I'd like to take this moment and also to thank Councilman Anthony Phillips for this time and space. Deputy Commissioner Myisha Massey wears a trailblazer. She's a professional, she's an engager, she's accessible, and approachable. From the time she served at the 35th District as commander, I realized that she was someone special. She came in hitting the ground running. She is genuinely interested, not only in her job, but also the people that she served in the community. She interacts well with the community into which she was responsible for. The community and the 35th District Chaplaincy and PDAC received her well with open arms because we knew that she was someone special and made a difference. As the new deputy commissioner, she will do well in that job, or do/or a better job. Deputy Commissioner -- I'm sorry, Commissioner Kevin Bethel made an excellent choice in choosing our new commissioner. Our Philadelphia community needs someone like Deputy Commissioner Massey, his leadership to take the great city in the direction that she will -- that will build closer partnership and the community with the police. Some say that the police and community are separated, but we're not divorced. She is genuinely an innovator who is not afraid to take the initiative, and I pray that success in favor of God in our endeavors throughout the career. God bless you.
Katrina Iskra.
Deputy Commissioner Massey, can you come back to the podium just briefly? We just want to say on behalf of members of City Council under your new role as Deputy Commissioner of Community Partnerships, and we know the mayor has an agenda to overall focus on a comprehensive approach in addressing gun violence and public safety here in the city of Philadelphia, and particularly when it comes to community partnerships, is the effort to build the bridge between the Philadelphia Police Department and the community. And so we just want to just say congratulations, and we thank the leadership of Councilmember Phillips for acknowledging you and your new role. I think all of us in here recognize that it was the police officer yesterday that pretty much prevented a massacre that could have took place in West Philadelphia. So we thank you and all the members of the Philadelphia Police Department for all your hard work and your dedication, and we look forward to partnering with you and moving the city of Philadelphia forward and making sure we have a safe city. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Will the Clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Jessie Ito.
I'm Jessie Ito. I'm the chef-owner of Royal Izakaya. It's such a great honor to be here. Thank you, Councilmember Rue Landau, for this great honor and all the cosigners. I wish I prepared a better speech or could juggle or something because I feel a little underprepared. But, you know, when I got into this, I was 14 years old. Between my family and myself, we'd been feeding this area for five decades Japanese food. My parents used to own Fuji in South Jersey, and I never had an expectation that I'd be at this level of the culinary scene, and I'm just so honored to be representing Philadelphia this year at the James Beard Awards. We have a super-rich culinary scene, and we have a great history of bringing home that award, so I'm hoping to take it home for the win this year for all of us. So wish me luck. Come visit me at the restaurant, and thank you for having me. Okay?
My name is Tanisha Reinhardt. I'm going to read my comments so that I won't forget anything, but I'm going to keep them short and sweet, just like me. Good morning, President Johnson, esteemed councilmembers, fellow Philadelphians, and all attendees. I am co-founder of Philly Girls Jump, established in 2016, where our mission is to not only empower the spirit of fun and joy where our mission is to not only empower the spirit of fun and joy, but to also build community. I am a lifelong resident of Philadelphia from the northwest section of the city. My educational journey has been rooted on Broad Street, attending Ivy League School, Philadelphia High School for Girls, and Temple University. I am undeniably Philly through and through. In our neighborhoods, Double Dutch was more than just a game. It was a cornerstone of our childhood. It is a shared experience that brings people together across backgrounds. It provided inexpensive outdoor fun and fostered meaningful friendships beyond the ropes. Philly Girls Jump has had the privilege of bringing Double Dutch to many of your districts, elevating community events with the nostalgic click-clack of the ropes and the smiles and laughter that followed. Double Dutch is deeply rooted in Philly's cultural fabric and inspires creativity, resilience, and teamwork. Double Dutch is intergenerational fun and offers numerous fitness benefits. Establishing Philly Double Dutch Day would remind and encourage residents to engage in healthy, enjoyable activities that promote both physical fitness and social well-being. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, for introducing this resolution. It is my great privilege and honor to wholeheartedly support Philly Double Dutch Day. Again, my name is Tanisha Reinhardt. Thank you for your time and congratulations to our new Deputy Commissioner.
Paul Birdsong.
My name is Paul Birdsong. I am now the National Ambassador for the Panther Party. So, I speak on behalf of every Panther Party chapter nationwide that we are looking to help the citizens of Philadelphia become a beacon of hope for the rest of the United States. We are here for the same purpose, 240176, that money being allocated. We want closures for the moms in Philadelphia who lost their children and don't know who they lost their children to. We got two fathers here today, one whose son died last year and doesn't have any information about it, the other whose son died in 2019, don't have any information about it. We had a mother whose son died in 2004. She was going to come, but she felt intimidated. I don't know why, but she don't have any information about that. We want to push to get that done. I found out that there's a news clipping that says that they're deciding between a dilapidated warehouse in North Philly and University City. And University City Philly is up to date and is ready to go. What's the decision? What's the decision? What's the decision to make right there? That's the easy one. Dilapidated warehouse, updated facility, ready to go. There's no decision to make there. These mothers need to know who killed their children. These people ain't going to stop killing people out here until they got something to fear. If they know that 50% of the shootings are going to go unsolved, they don't care. They're not scared. I'm going to shoot you. I'm probably not going to get caught anyway. Come on now. Why would we put it in a dilapidated warehouse that gives them more power to do it? You saw what happened yesterday. Eight people got shot in Philly this week. Now, the other ones, the other two shootings, the one at 53rd and what's that? Chancellor, they don't know who did that one. The one at 50 and the Osage, they don't know who did that one. Come on now. We got to do something about this. The decision, there is no decision that needs to be made. You got a state-of-the-art facility, dilapidated warehouse, basic human intelligence, all power to the people, all power to the people of Philadelphia, all power to the mothers looking for closure, all power to the homicide victims. There's no decision that needs to be made. Let's do this. What are we waiting for, Philly? You have black sons. Statistically, they are at a higher risk of being them people that got killed and nobody knows who killed them. You're under 45 years old. Statistically, you're at risk. So am I. There's no decision that needs to be made. And I don't need this mic. All power to the people.
Frank Lamar Slaton.
Thank you, Mayor Parker, councilmembers. I'm an attendee of South Carolina State University and also a graduate of the School of Hard Knocks. I did 16 years for a crime I did not commit. I'm a community activist in the West Philadelphia area around 52nd and Market. I'm here in support of Bill 240176. We need this forensic lab rehab so we can solve some of these murders. I have a son that was killed in 2019. His murder's unsolved. We also need money allocated for crime prevention, police reform. At the present time, I have a pending police investigation, DC number 24-19-019016, against an officer. And I know a lot of you guys don't want to hear this officer's name because he drug the city's name through the mud against Officer Linwood Norman, who has 450 cases under review. He's reared his ugly head again in West Philadelphia. And I've been being harassed by this guy for years. I did 16 years because I had a relationship with his children's mother. And he's back. And I'm imploring, I'm imploring you guys, please do something. Please. Took 16 years of my life. 16 years, man. And I love the good cops. I love them. We need them. But I can't do this community activism around 52nd and Market Street area without you guys. This guy's involved in sex cults and all type of things. We can't do it without you guys. This guy is a maniac and he needs to be brought to justice. Linwood Norman does not, like former Commissioner Charles Ramsey said, his badge should have been melted, and it should have been. Please, I'm imploring you guys to allocate these funds, crime prevention, police reform, and help us. We need you in the Market Street area to stop the violence. To see what happened, that's the best job. Thank you. Thank you.
Paul. Paul Birdsong. The individuals that you mentioned that didn't have response regarding the closure on the homicides that happened, here's my chief of staff, John Christmas. Just have them provide the information to him and we'll follow with the homicide unit just to make sure there's a level of dialogue between the family and the individuals. The individual lost a loved one in the Philadelphia Police Department.
We appreciate that, and I'm sure they do. All power to the people.
Kate Perez.
This past Tuesday, right before the budget meeting, many concerned constituents came together to rally in front of City Hall and discuss the impacts that this kind of budget would have on our city. I saw some of you walk by the rally, so I hope you were able to hear some of the speeches. The community came together to say that we don't agree with the overinflated police budget in the name of public safety. Our students deserve a fully-staffed school without asbestos and reliable public transportation. We know the police don't keep us safe and in many instances are the very force we need protection from. Family members of Alexander Spencer were there to talk about the loss they were suffering through after PPD officers tackled Spencer to the ground and shot him in the back during a stop-and-frisk. As a city, we look forward to his murderers being held accountable. This kind of violence is taught and shared in police exchange programs with Israeli occupation forces. Some exchanges facilitated by the Anti-Defamation League and their own executives worry that it makes American officers more likely to use force and contribute to the problem of police brutality. About six officers are leaving the force every week and every day, people are realizing that they no longer wish to be complicit in an inherently racist system. During the budget meeting on Tuesday, when the council asked what were they doing in terms of decarceration, I don't think we got a very clear answer, but we did hear a worrying fact from Councilmember Landau, who said 90% of the people being held have not been tried. So, with the current prison population of 4,600, that's 4,140 people who are being held without being tried. The prison representative said that the Speedy Trial Act was paused during COVID, but it seems there's still a long history of people serving sentences in our city prisons, with some inmates waiting seven years before they get to trial. We must focus onto releasing inmates. As a city, we want to take a stand against violence and we know that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Just yesterday, there was the terrible shooting at the Eid Festival. And in response, Mayor Parker tweeted out, "We stand united with the Muslim community and vow to work together to restore balance and light to our communities." I hope this vow extends to the millions of Muslims trapped under constant siege with our weapons. We should follow our United Nations Human Rights Council, who passed a resolution calling to halt arms transfers to Israel. We should align ourselves with the obligations under international law to stop the ongoing genocide and pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Sarah Novick.
Hi. I'm Sarah Novick. I'm the author of the book True Biz, and it is an honor to be here today with you. Thank you to Councilwoman Richardson, to the Free Public Library, and everyone who makes the One Book, One Philly programming possible. In the deaf world, it's common that deaf children believe that when they grow up, they will either become hearing or they will die. Why is that? Because they've never seen a deaf grown up before. How many artists, inventors, leaders have we lost this way? Dreams are cut short before they've even started. That is why representation matters. That's what books and libraries can change, as they did for me. And that's what robust bilingual education for deaf and hard-of-hearing kids can do. While I'm here, I want to ask for your continued support to the Pennsylvania School for the Deaf. We should be Philly proud of this school, the third-oldest deaf school in the country that gives kids access to two languages and to deaf role models. Thank you so much for your time.
Maritza Gertie.
Maritza Gertie. Good morning. My name is Maritza Gertie. I'm a mother of five, three of which have gone through the School District of Philadelphia and two that are currently two second graders in the district at Mary McLabbathune Elementary. I am also a constituent of Cindy Bass's district. I am here to ask for the full support from this council on Bill Number 240251, brought forward by Councilmember Phillips. This is a very much-needed effort in order to ensure that parents and guardians are part of the process and solution-seeking when it comes to family engagement. For far too long, parents have not been at the table. That time must end if we want to ensure that change occurs in our city. I'd like to thank organizations like Children First PA for giving parents like myself and others the opportunity to learn more, to then ask questions regarding our children's education. I want to thank the councilmembers that are in support of this bill. I ask those of you that have not supported this bill as of yet to ask yourselves the following. Have I been an integral part of my child's educational career at their school? Was I a part of the process from beginning to end? Or was I just an afterthought? Do I want parents and guardians to have a voice in this city when it comes to engagement, accountability, budget, and oversight? We must all have the opportunity to be heard and listened to for the sake of our children's future. And due to the time constraints regarding testimony, I will say this very quickly. Nosotros merecemos hacer respetado y escuchado para poder obtener un mejor futuro para nuestros niños. Thank you very much. Gracias.
Gianna Williams-Davis.
My name is Gianna Williams-Davis. I am a mother of two, two sons, grandmother of eight. And I am here today in support of Councilwoman Phillips's Bill 240251, addressing a pressing issue in our city, the urgent need to enhance parental and guardian engagement, oversight, accountability, and resources within Philadelphia. The bill comes at a critical time as the declaration of a state of emergency by the mayor highlights the severity of public safety concerns with over 3,000 shootings reported in 2023 and 17% involving young people between the ages of 12 and 21. Research from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention emphasizes the crucial role of supportive and engaged parenting in reducing deviant behavior among children. However, challenges such as lack of engagement in mental health services, misuse of social media, and insufficient resources for parental involvement demand urgent attention and comprehensive of the day set up resolution. Councilwoman Phillips's bill proposes the creation of the Parent-Guardian Engagement Task Force, which will convene diverse stakeholders to investigate, examine, explore, and assess strategies for equipping parents and guardians with the necessary knowledge, skills, and resources. This includes promoting healthy lifestyle choices for children and providing social services and mental health support for families. By committing to convene within 90 days of the creation and prepare a report of its findings and the recommendations within six months, the task force demonstrates a proactive approach to addressing these critical issues and fostering positive change in our community. Together, I think we can work towards a safer and more supportive environment for all families in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Jeff Jones. Jeff Jones and Kynbolai and Emiliano Ward make their way to the podium as well. Jeff Jones. Kynbolai and Emiliano Ward.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Jeff. Started again. Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Jones. And I'm the senior consultant for GTA Consulting. I'm also a committee member of Ward 59. I'm coming today in support of 240251 by Councilmember Phillips, the Community and Parent Engagement Task Force. I believe that that's a very vital, important task force to establish within our city. Many of us know the two adages, "It takes a village to raise a child," and "A child that is not embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth." I believe that this task force creates a voice for that village to be able to embrace the child to give them the warmth of the success path that they can travel. I also believe that it's didactically laid out in a way that it provides opportunity and resources so that parents can benefit from everything that they need to have to be successful, to land that foundation that's supportive for their child. I also believe that there should be an opportunity to engage more parents on the task force so that it can truly reflect the diverse representation of all the parents throughout this great city. So, as this task force is continuing to be formed, I would like to work with the councilmember in that effort to make sure that we can reflect more of the parents' voices conclusively on this so that it can be successful across the board, as I know it can be. So, thank you for this time and speak to you this morning. And I appreciate the great work that all of you are doing and look forward to working with you, Councilmember Phillips, on your great work. Thank you again.
Kynbolai, Emiliano Ward, and Carlotta Farina also make their way up.
Good morning. My name is Kynbolai. I'm here representing Children First. I live in West Oak Lane. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 240251, Councilmember Phillips, my councilperson's, resolution to start a parent task force. So, three years ago, Children First launched a concerted effort to organize parents across Philadelphia. I'm here with two of them today. We knew that, we did this because we knew that more could be done to engage people who cared for our organization's prime constituency, children and teens. So, parents leave the experience of underfunded schools, lack of quality childcare, and out-of-school-time activities. They worry day and night about whether or not their kids are going to come home or brush up in contact with the criminal justice system. So, we wanted to create a space for parents to share their experiences and channel their frustration into a collective fight for better conditions that their families can feel.
have faced in your life. Patience, faith, and intelligence will all be tested. If you want your child or children to succeed, you must be fully invested in the process. So raising children has always been challenging, and as a matter of fact, 50 or 60 years ago, they were more challenging. So studies show that the first five years of life are the most critical for a child's brain development. In this period of time, if this period of time is compromised by neglect or abuse or even social media or screen time, then your child is going to have a much harder time going forward in life. If this task force can provide any, provide parents and caregivers with solutions or information to increase the positive outcome for your children, then I think it's worth implementing. Also, the reality is that only a child's parent or direct caregiver can make sure the child has the support and information they need to become productive citizens. Teachers and social programs can assist, but they cannot replace the parent or caregiver. So it's never been the city, state, or federal government's job to actually raise your children or provide them with activities to do. Ultimately, your children are your responsibility, and you are accountable for their actions. And you also have to keep in mind that their actions impact the entire community, as we saw yesterday. Thank you.
Carlotta Farina, can Marla Davis Bellamy and Dr. Dorothy Johnson-Spite also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, President Kenyatta Johnson and members of City Council. I'm here to support the creation of the Parent-Guardian Engagement Task Force Resolution advanced by Councilperson Anthony Phillips of the Ninth Council District. Children are the most valuable asset for towns, cities, states, countries, and the world. They are the future of our existence. They should be nurtured from birth by loving parents, family, and the community. There are times when this may be difficult, but neglect is not a remedy. The task force will consist of people who have experienced in all phases of positive growth from the crib to adulthood. The Parent-Guardian Task Force will be able to have a sense of the health of the families, be it mental or financial. The task force will be able to intercede before the child is left to his own devices. One isn't born with wisdom. Wisdom takes a lifetime to attain. The task force will help to prevent the abandonment of parental responsibilities. Parents are their children's first teachers and protectors. The task force will support parents with information and guidance. The resolution must pass. And since we have a prime example in the news right now, Dawn Staley, I have this comment from something that she has said: "The disciplined person can do anything. This is the mantra instilled in me by my mother and my upbringing." Thank you.
Marla Davis Bellamy, can Dr. Dorothy Johnson-Spite and Lynn Landis also make their way to the podium?
I'm Marla Davis Bellamy. Good morning, City Council President Johnson, all members of council and staff. I'm the director of the Philadelphia Ceasefire Program and the Philly Hub, which is based at the Katz School of Medicine at Temple University. I'm here this morning to support Councilman Phillips' resolution to establish a parent- guardian engagement task force to serve as a council advisory body. For those of you who are not aware, Philadelphia Ceasefire is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's first replication of the Evidence-Based Cure Violence Global Program. We launched this program in 2011 in the 22nd Police District, and in 2017, an impact evaluation was completed on our work, which reported a 30% reduction in shootings in our target area. Since that time, we have migrated to the northwest section of the city, where we're working to duplicate our success in the 14th and 35th Police District. Three years ago, we also launched the Philly Hub, which is a group of city and community agencies who meet one hour weekly on Mondays and work collaboratively to address the needs of individuals, families, and communities in crisis. Our membership includes over 70 organizations, and there are anywhere from 20 to 30 agencies who are on our call. Since we've started, we have actually reviewed about 80 situations. We're helping schools, parents, grandparents, foster parents, truancy officers with issues from everything, everything including shooting, housing, truancy, behavioral health needs, hate crimes, food, clothing, and transportation, to name a few. The Hub is actually a law enforcement model. It started in Canada and is widely used throughout the state of Massachusetts. Philadelphia Ceasefire hires returning citizens to work and provide case management support to high-risk individuals that are deeply engaged in shooting activity. These individuals, according to Dr. Daniel Webster of Johns Hopkins University, are not getting enough attention in our existing strategies in Philadelphia to reduce violent crime. However, if we're able to successfully engage them one-on-one and provide direction and support for them and their caretakers, many of these young people will make better lifestyle decisions, which ultimately will lead to a reduction in shootings and homicides. Years ago, I actually heard a still, small voice that told me people revert back to how they were raised. And I'm sure everyone in this room who is a parent, who has served in that capacity, will tell you it's not easy. But we must also help parents, grandparents, foster parents, and guardians with employment, housing, food, daycare utilities, and transportation. They also need help understanding the 40- to 60-page IEPs, the Individual Education Plan, and how to advocate and discipline their children. They cannot do this alone. They need a village and need to know where to turn to help themselves and their children. We all have a role to play, whether you're an educator, doctor, union leader, clergy member, or clergy member or developer. Our children are angry, frustrated, and traumatized, and in order to support them, we need to stop judging them and allocate the resources necessary to identify and address their needs. This is why we support this new task force and will further inform City Council about this perplexing problem. But we can't do this in silos. We must coordinate and collaborate. We must take on this issue with a sense of urgency. We must bring in subject matter experts, no matter where they are. The good news is that we have the leadership in place to definitely make an impact and change. And the Philadelphia Ceasefire Program, which is grounded in the discipline of public health and the members of the Philly Hub support this resolution and are committed to working with this task force and rolling up our sleeves to do whatever it takes to turn our city around. Thank you.
Dr. Dorothy Johnson-Spite, can Lynn Landis, Obana Haggins, and Kelsey Leone also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, to the honorable members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia and guests. I am Dr. Dorothy Johnson-Spite, founder and National Executive Director of Mothers in Charge. Anyone who is or have ever been a parent knows parenting is one of the hardest jobs there is. You also know there's no blueprint on how to do it perfectly. Many of us parents have struggled with the awesome task of parenting and may have even made some mistakes because, as stated, it is one of the hardest jobs there is, and that is not recognized enough. As many of you know, Mothers in Charge is made up of mothers, grandmothers, aunts and sisters, and others who have had a loved one murdered. When a mother or father-child is taken due to community violence, it is a devastating pain that parents must endure because we think our main job on earth is to protect our children. And when they are taken, it impacts our every being in ways that there are no words to describe. I am old enough to remember back in the day how important the village was in supporting parents in raising children. We no longer have that village. Please hear me. I cannot tell you how many times over the last 20-plus years of our existence, many mothers have come to us and shared that while working hard each day to keep a roof over their family's heads, they knew their son or daughter was hanging out with the wrong group of kids based on behaviors they had observed, but in far too many situations, did not know where to turn, did not know where to find the resources and supports to help them. In some cases, parents went to the police to intervene before it was too late, only to hear, "Madam, there's nothing we can do until your child does something wrong." We hear these stories when parents come to Mothers in Charge, come to Mothers in Charge for support when it's too late. It is often after the child or loved one has been murdered. The resolution introduced by Councilman Anthony Phillips is one of the major steps that needs to be taken to address violence prevention in the city of Philadelphia. The resolution highlights the lack of resources and supports for parents, guardians, and engagement, and the lack of in-and-out-of-school-time activities that appears to be significant contributing factor to gun violence that demands urgent attention and comprehensive solutions now. Last year in the city of Philadelphia, there were too many children under the age of 18 shot and killed, and 160 between the ages of 18 and 30, and an alarming number of 410 neighbors were murdered overall. We should all be ashamed of this tragedy in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. These murdered children may not be your biological child or anyone that you know, but they are all our children of Philadelphia for whom you have pledged your best to protect them. And I ask that you do that today. This resolution will provide several ways to equip parents and guardians with the necessary knowledge, skills, resources, and supports that our children need to live. There's a task before you, and the Philadelphia community is a simple request but a daunting task. Save our children, our most precious asset, by supporting the creation of the Parent-Guardian Task Force. Thank you for the honor of giving testimony on this very important, lifesaving resolution. Thank you.
Lynn Landis, can Obana Haggins, Kelsey Leone, and Gary Whedon also make their way to the podium?
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I want to comment on the bill to study illegal camping and ask why are we still studying it and not enforcing the laws against it? We have several people sleeping on our streets, in our neighborhoods, and the police refuse to arrest them, and social services seems ineffective at handling the situation. In addition, I want to comment on today's resolution congratulating scientists who developed a COVID vaccine. COVID vaccines are well documented to have serious, short, and long-term harmful health effects, including death. Doctors and scientists worldwide report that these vaccines are neither safe nor effective. Parents in our region should be aware that any child 11 years old or older can come to Philadelphia and get certain vaccines, including COVID vaccines, without their parents' knowledge or consent. Instead of issuing congratulations, City Council should be conducting special hearings that myself and other activists have been requesting to accept public comments on the effects of the COVID vaccines and the impact of the COVID mandates on our city at large. Thank you.
Obana Haggins, then Kelsey Leone and Gary Whedon.
Good morning, Obana Haggins. I'm speaking on the 240066. I wonder if any of these properties were owned by American freedmen. As an American freedman, I am deeply troubled by the historical injustices that have led to the depreciation of homes and commercial properties of the people of emancipated ancestry in the city of Philadelphia. These injustices caused by redlining, urban renewal, and gentrification have had a profound and lasting impact on the ability to be upwardly mobile. Redlining and discriminatory practices that began in the 1930s have left a lasting legacy of the economic and racial segregation in our city. Urban renewal and gentrification have further exacerbated these issues, displacing longtime residents and causing significant loss of wealth. I now present my third bill, the Redlining Repair Bill, to retrieve the stolen wealth and give it back to the rightful owners and heirs. I propose the implementation of municipal bonds and other monetary policies to compensate those who have suffered loss. Municipal bonds could be used to fund homestead initiatives and provide direct financial compensation to those affected. These measures would not only help to rectify the historical injustices caused by redlining, urban renewal, and gentrification, but also promote economic growth and stability in our city. By investing in our communities, we can help to ensure a brighter future for the residents of Philadelphia. I urge the seated members of council to take a swift action on this matter. And as a side note, I just want to, you know, with the shooting yesterday, we need conflict resolution, right? And you know that we have a conflict. I think it would be a great example for the youth of Philadelphia that we can have conflict resolution amongst ourselves between myself, Obana, the unseated member who's representing the people of Philadelphia, and the seated members of council. So let's make that example work. Thank you.
Kelsey Leone and Gary Whedon.
Good morning, City Council members, my name is Kelsey Leone. I am a harm reduction researcher, and I am sorry that I am so casually dressed. I did not expect to be here today, but this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart and that I've devoted a great deal of time and energy to. I'm here to comment on Bills 240015 and 240017, the opioid antidote and encampment bills, which would create data of who is having their, reverses overdosed multiple times, and also anyone who is refusing services, whatever that might mean. I'm opposed to it, and I'd like to just use Councilmember Lazada's words to, because I thank her for putting it so clearly, what the logic behind this bill is. So back on March 12th, there was a Public Health and Human Services Committee meeting where these bills were initially discussed. My colleagues with the Philly Coalition for Dignity and Treatment gave testimony to their work in healthcare and harm reduction and spoke in opposition to these bills. After that, Councilmember Lazada went on the radio and said, quote, "These bills are a way of us collecting data to figure out who's there, how often are first responders, how often are they having to administer Narcan to the same person?" I've heard from many of our EMS workers that unfortunately, they overturn the same person three, four, or five times a day. And so it's unacceptable. This person should obviously not- You also know there's no blueprint on how to do it perfectly.
Sure isn't.
Many of us parents have struggled with the awesome task of parenting and may have even made some mistakes because as stated, it is one of the hardest jobs there is, and that is not recognized enough. As many of you know, Mothers in Charge is made up of mothers, grandmothers, aunts and sisters, and others who have had a loved one murdered. When a mother or father child is taken due to community violence, it is a devastating pain that parents must endure. Because we think our main job on earth is to protect our children, and when they are taken, it impacts our every being in ways that there are no words to describe. I am old enough to remember back in the day how important the village was in supporting parents and raising children. We no longer have that village. Please hear me, I cannot tell you how many times over the last 20-plus years of our existence, many mothers have come to us and shared that while working hard each day to keep a roof over their family's heads, they knew their son or daughter was hanging out with the wrong group of kids based on behaviors they had observed, but in far too many situations did not know where to turn, did not know where to find the resources and supports to help them. In some cases, parents went to the police to intervene before it was too late, only to hear, "Madam, there's nothing we can do until your child does something wrong." We hear these stories when parents come to Mothers in Charge, come to Mothers in Charge for support when it's too late. It is often after the child or loved one has been murdered. The resolution introduced by Councilman Anthony Phillips is one of the major steps that needs to be taken to address violence prevention in the City of Philadelphia. The resolution highlights the lack of resources and supports for parents, guardians, and engagement, and the lack of in-and-out-of-school-time activities that appears to be significant contributing factor to gun violence that demands urgent attention and comprehensive solutions now. Last year in the City of Philadelphia, there were too many children under the age of eighteen shot and killed, and 160 between the ages of 18 and 30, and an alarming number of 410 neighbors were murdered overall. We should all be ashamed of this tragedy in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. These murdered children may not be your biological child or anyone that you know, but they are all our children of Philadelphia for whom you have pledged your best to protect them, and I ask that you do that today. This resolution will provide several ways to equip parents and guardians with the necessary knowledge, skills, resources, and supports that our children need to live. There's a task before you, and the Philadelphia community is a simple request but a daunting task. Save our children, our most precious asset, by supporting the creation of the Parent-Guardian Task Force. Thank you for the honor of giving testimony on this very important, life-saving resolution. Thank you.
Lynn Landis, Ken Obana Haggins, Kelsey Leon, and Gary Whedon also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I want to comment on the bill to study illegal camping and ask why are we still studying it and not enforcing the laws against it? We have several people sleeping on our streets, in our neighborhoods, and the police refuse to arrest them, and social services seems ineffective at handling the situation. In addition, I want to comment on today's resolution congratulating scientists who developed a COVID vaccine. COVID vaccines are well documented to have serious short and long-term harmful health effects, including death. Doctors and scientists worldwide report that these vaccines are neither safe nor effective. Parents in our region should be aware that any child 11 years old or older can come to Philadelphia and get certain vaccines, including COVID vaccines, without their parents' knowledge or consent. Instead of issuing congratulations, City Council should be conducting special hearings that myself and other activists have been requesting to accept public comments on the effects of the COVID vaccines and the impact of the COVID mandates on our city at large. Thank you.
Obana Haggins, then Kelsey Leon and Gary Whedon.
Good morning, Obana Haggins. I'm speaking on the 240066. I wonder if any of these properties were owned by American freedmen. As an American freedman, I am deeply troubled by the historical injustices that have led to the depreciation of homes and commercial properties of the people of emancipated ancestry in the City of Philadelphia. These injustices caused by redlining, urban renewal, and gentrification have had a profound and lasting impact on the ability to be upwardly mobile. Redlining and discriminatory practices that began in the 1930s have left a lasting legacy of the economic and racial segregation in our city. Urban renewal and gentrification have further exacerbated these issues, displacing longtime residents and causing significant loss of wealth. I now present my third bill, the Redlining Repair Bill, to retrieve the stolen wealth and give it back to the rightful owners and heirs. I propose the implementation of municipal bonds and other monetary policies to compensate those who have suffered loss. Municipal bonds could be used to fund homestead initiatives and provide direct financial compensation to those affected. These measures would not only help to rectify the historical injustices caused by redlining, urban renewal, and gentrification, but also promote economic growth and stability in our city. By investing in our communities, we can help to ensure a brighter future for the residents of Philadelphia. I urge the seated members of council to take a swift action on this matter. And as a side note, I just want to, you know, with the shooting yesterday, we need conflict resolution, right? And you know that we have a conflict. I think it would be a great example for the youth of Philadelphia that we can have conflict resolution amongst ourselves between myself, Obana, the unseated member who's representing the people of Philadelphia, and the seated members of council. So let's make that example work. Thank you.
Kelsey Leon and Gary Whedon.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Kelsey Leon. I am a harm reduction researcher, and I am sorry that I am so casually dressed. I did not expect to be here today, but this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart and that I've devoted a great deal of time and energy to. I'm here to comment on bills 240015 and 240017, the opioid antidote and encampment bills, which would create data of who is having their, reverses overdosed multiple times, and also anyone who is refusing services, whatever that might mean. I'm opposed to it, and I'd like to just use Councilmember Lazada's words to, because I thank her for putting it so clearly what the logic behind this bill is. So back on March 12th, there was a Public Health and Human Services Committee meeting where these bills were initially discussed. My colleagues with the Philly Coalition for Dignity and Treatment gave testimony to their work in healthcare and harm reduction and spoke in opposition to these bills. After that, Councilmember Lazada went on the radio and said, quote, "These bills are a way of us collecting data to figure out who's there, how often are first responders, how often are they having to administer Narcan to the same person?" I've heard from many of our EMS workers that unfortunately, they overturn the same person three, four, or five times a day, and so it's unacceptable. This person should obviously not be managing their own life and making decisions for themselves. Obviously, they're not capable, but we can't say that unless we have the numbers, right? We can't prove that to those who continue, we can't prove that to those who continue to fight against the work that we're doing unless we show them the data. And what I found yesterday in the hearing is that even trying to collect the data, these folks who want to allow folks on Kensington to do what they want on the street, they don't want us to collect the data. I think there is a fundamental order of operations issue here. You cannot arrest people or collect data on people when there are no treatment options available in the city, like, like, there are treatment options available, but the landscape has been proven time and time again to be sparse. I am open to talking with anyone on City Council about my experiences on the ground in Kensington where we support people who are housed, unhoused, all our neighbors, and I welcome working on this issue with any, any one of you.
Good morning, good afternoon. I'm here behalf of my son. He got killed. Grats. 28th of last year. Going to school, getting his education, raised by good parents, don't mean nothing. Got kids out here carrying guns. When I was that age, I ain't know nothing about no guns, I ain't know nothing about no masses, I ain't know nothing about none of that. I'm 58. And I go home to my wife every day, and she gets on me and cry. She say, "Do it again, babe." I say, "I can't. Can't go out there. I can start a war. People don't know me. I can start a war." I found out where they lived at two days after they killed my son. I could, it's two decisions I had to make. Do I want to stay with my family, or do I want to head back to jail? I choose my family. I live too, I don't live too far from where the house at. All I'm saying, between the masses and these damn guns, we got to get them off the street. Because not only my son, how many other people got killed? The boy was a pair, his son been dead 2019. I got a homie, his son been dead 2001. What is we doing? Like, we, we all, I can get all this together, and we go out there and make a war. That's the right thing to do? No. Because then we'd be hurting other people. My family hurt, and his family hurt. I don't have nothing against the guy. I pray. I pray for the guy that he's safe. I don't want nothing to happen to nobody, because I done hurt so many people in my life, I don't hurt nobody else. All I'm saying, we got to do something to these damn asses and these guns. It don't start down here with y'all. It start up there with the, with the, with the big boys. Y'all mean, y'all just a little piece of the puzzle. So that's my whole thing, man. If y'all got kids, if y'all going through something with them, y'all tell them every morning, y'all love them, y'all hug them, because tomorrow, they go out the door, they might not come home. The cops scared. I got a homie that's a cop, he scared. When do you know when people shooting at cops? They don't care. It started at the home. I just, I stopped two shootings in my neighborhood. Gee, boy did something with, bruh. Nah, I don't want to go through that. I want your mom go through it. I talked him down. You could talk to these kids once you get them, but how many dudes is willing to do that? You hear about these OGs out here getting money? You hear about the eat, you got so much inflow on the neigh, in the neighborhood? Grab a young boy, pull him to your side, say, "Come on, man, let's take a ride, let's get some sneakers, let's play some basketball." This is what I do. I'm living for my son, just live for devil. My son wasn't with no violence. He was humble, he was going to college. He was just a good kid, man. He come in here, he make all y'all laugh. It just hurt me so bad that my wife. What you, what you do when you go home with your wife? And she say, "Babe, can you do it one more time? Or can you just kill him? Can you do this one more time?" And you got, and you a man. I'm a man. I got pride. My son get killed, that's my youngest. I got 13 kids, that's my youngest. I walked away from it. It takes a man to walk away from situations like that. It takes a chump to put his stuff in a situation to go back to jail. I'm not, neither one of them, I'm a man. I'm gonna stand up here, I'm gonna keep doing what I'm doing, I don't care what nobody say. I'm going out there, if I see a young boy fighting, I'm breaking it up, I'm pulling him to the side, I'm talking, you bully, all that, I'm doing all that. That's my image. I thank y'all, God bless y'all, and make sure y'all kiss y'all kids and say y'all love them every day. If y'all don't, it's a wrap.
Council President, there are no more names for public comment.
We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240251?
A resolution authorizing the creation of a task force to study and develop proposals, strategies, and recommendations to enhance parental guardian engagement, oversight, accountability, and resources within the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion regarding Resolution Number
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that Resolution Number 240251 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240020-A?
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions."
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Landau. Councilmember Lazada. Councilmember Young. Councilmember Harity. Councilmember O'Rourke. Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember Squilla. Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Ahmad. And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 16, the nays are zero. The majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240176?
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2024 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and to the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 240176. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the amendment to Bill Number 240176 be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240015?
An ordinance adding a new chapter 6-1600 to the Philadelphia Code entitled "City Reports on Opioid Antidote Use," to require certain reports from the Office of the Managing Director to council concerning the city's use of opioid antidote, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Landau. Councilmember Lazada. Councilmember Young. Councilmember Harity. Councilmember O'Rourke. Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember Bass. Squilla, excuse me. Councilmember, Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Ahmad. And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 16, the nays are zero. The majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Congratulations. The chief clerk will read the title of Bill Number 240017.
An ordinance adding a new chapter 10-2700 to the Philadelphia Code entitled "City Reports on Impermissible Camping," to require certain reports from the Office of the Managing Director to council concerning camping activities carried out in violation of the code and the city's efforts to address such activities, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Landau. Councilmember Lazada. Councilmember Young. Councilmember Harity. Councilmember O'Rourke. Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember Squilla. Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Ahmad. And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 16, the nays are zero. The majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Now for consideration of privileged resolution, would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Philip and Bass congratulating Captain Maisha S. Massey for her promotion to Deputy Commissioner as the first Deputy Commissioner for Community Partnerships and on her successful command as the first female commander of the 35th Police District.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Catherine Gilmore Richardson celebrating the selection of true biz by Sarah Novick for the 2024 One Book One Philadelphia Program.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Sarah Novick, who is with us today, and on behalf of the One Book One Philadelphia Program, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution introduced by Councilmembers Gautier and Lazada authorizing the Joint Committees on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless and Public Property and Public Works to hold hearings on the 10-year performance of the Philadelphia Land Bank, what barriers exist to effective application review, process efficiency, and transparent communication, and how these can be solved to maximize this unique opportunity to create genuinely affordable housing and community steward green spaces for neighborhoods that need them most.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Garder here for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution introduced by Councilmembers Thomas and Young recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Dawn Staley, coach of the University of South Carolina Gamecocks, for leading the undefeated 38-0 Gamecocks II victory in the 2024 NCAA Women's Basketball Championship, her second championship in three seasons, and third championship in her coaching career.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. And members Isaiah, Thomas, and Jeffrey Young were just waiting for the endorsement of that statue on behalf of Dawn Staley. Would a clerk please read the next title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Jones honoring and recognizing Philly Girl's Jump and further declaring May 4th, 2024, and every first Saturday and May thereafter, Philly Double Dutch Day in the City of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption, and mark that when we present, that there will be a demonstration by members of council. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Jones honoring and congratulating the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., Pennsylvania Chapter on the occasion of their annual legislative day.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Landau honoring and congratulating Royal Isakaya Jesse Ito for his nomination as a finalist for a 2024 James Beard Award.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Landau recognizing and honoring Circadium Circus School as the first accredited circus school in the United States.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution introduced by Councilmember Bass recognizing the 8th District Rebuild Community Development Partners, Nice Town CDC and Allegheny West Foundation, for their hard work in revitalization of communities in their respective neighborhoods.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconding that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Council President, there are no other privileged resolutions for consideration.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I'm so grateful that Council President Johnson, Minority Leader Brooks, Councilmember Harity, as well as myself, all joined up to co-introduce a resolution honoring members of Unite Here Local 274, who have been rallying and now strategically striking at the sports complex. For those who don't know, workers employed by Aramark at the sports complex year-round, the folks that prepare and serve the food that you spend way too much money on at Wells Fargo Center are negotiating and mobilizing to get what they obviously deserve and probably should be able to afford, since we spend so much money, healthcare benefits that can sustain them, healthcare benefits that can sustain their families whenever need be, and a standard minimum wage across the venues in the complex. Let me break this down real quick. Eighteen billion, would it be? Billion dollars, that's how much revenue Aramark generated just last year, eighteen billion dollars. Meanwhile, less than 20 of Aramark's employees at the Wells Fargo Center, where hundreds are employed, receive healthcare from their employer. Less than 20. At the same time, workers are paid at different rates depending on which venue where they're employed. Over at Wells Fargo Center, the lowest-paid workers are making under fifteen dollars an hour. So it's clear to see why 92% of workers at that arena voted to authorize some of the actions that we've seen this week. And on Tuesday, we saw the first strike at Wells Fargo Center in over 20 years. That's a pretty simple story to me. Workers aren't getting what they've earned from their employer, so they're leveraging their collective power. That's something this body can, I believe, and should support, and in this case, I am elated that so many of us have been playing cheerleader for Unite Here on this matter. Councilmembers Landau, Young, Harity, and Squilla deserve a special shout-out for joining workers on the picket line. I'm a bit salty that I didn't catch y'all the other day on that one. But while I would love to join folks on the picket line, I would prefer to see Aramark do right by their workers and reach a fair and a righteous agreement with their workers and get an amen from those who agree. So to the crib from the Sixers, for the love of Philly, do right by your workers, Aramark. And a final thank you has to go to workers of Local 274 themselves. These are our neighbors who clean the kitchen and close the bar. They keep the complex functional so that your night out is a pleasant one. Unite Here workers have been on a long journey of demonstrating the power that resides in solidarity and workplace democracy, so to me, they're an inspiration. City Council's rooting for them and for a fair contract. Glory to God and power to the people.
Speech is on behalf of the majority. The chair recognizes councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, council president, and thank you, councilmembers O'Rourke and others, for the resolution in support of Unite Here Local 274. I just wanted to remind all members of council about our one book, A One Philadelphia Picture, that we will take directly after council session today. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday marked Eid al-Fitr, which is the culmination of the end of Ramadan, which is a thirty-day period of prayer, reflection, and introspection about your spirituality. That was recognized by Muslims around the world, but about four hundred thousand here in Philadelphia. There were dozens of Eid celebrations from South Philly to the Northeast. And I had the opportunity to attend one at Twenty-Ninth and Chalmers in my district, sponsored by Germantown Masjid and myself, where twenty-five thousand Muslims peacefully came to pray. Not a curse word, not a loud voice, all with a positivity about the holiday itself. What I marked at it, though, colleagues, was most of them were under the age of forty-five. Like, when I walked through the crowd, the only people that recognized me were the Polis. And, you know, they were peaceful, but they are dis- detached from what we do here. They have no relevance clue about the importance of our work or the messages we should give. They are a powerful force yet untapped. And that we should call on our leaders, both in the masjid and outside, in these chambers, and on the second floor of City Hall, to engage them. A lot of people take Shahada, and that's the end of it. It's a constant evolution of your soul and your spirituality and your community as a result of your example. The other Eid was at Forty-Seven from Walucent's, right next door. I claim it, even though Jamie represents it, where a individual was sitting at a table. My grandkids were there. They chose to go to that. And during the process, a young lady was at the table, and it was almost like it was her table. She literally charged someone rent to sit there and eat. Like, this is my domain. Something happened. She saw the ops, if you would, and a gunfight broke out. My grandkid, who happens to run track, ran three blocks before she even looked back. Thank God, no one died. No one died. Three people were shot, five were arrested, five guns were taken aback. We have to do better reaching that group. And I call upon the masjids. Sutra Dean came here, Imam Sutra Dean, came here and gave us our charge this morning. What he does is what I'd like to replicate. He has the ability and street cred, unlike myself now, but he can talk to warring factions, sit them down and create a truce. We need to engage more people, relevant people, credible messengers, imams and alike, to encourage that dialogue. Because what the young man said that lost his son, was these kids ain't from ours. They are children. And you can't say you love something you afraid of. We have to engage them, whether it's sports, member Thomas, whether it's be sure, I mean, make sure the shooter does not live with you, whether it's conflict resolution in the schools, we have to double down and do more. Finally, changing topics is second. I'd like us to give a moment of silence for former ward leader of the fourth ward, Sonny Campbell, who was a community activist, third-generation activist. The Campbell family in West Philly, to their credit, has elected more judges of color than any other elected official I know of. And for that, he will be missed. He was a giant in the West Philly community, and I'd like to recognize Mr. President with a moment of silence.
Members, stand. The chair recognizes councilmember Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, council president. I want to speak to the resolution I introduced today, urging the United States government to take immediate action to protect and enshrine reproductive rights and ensure abortion access for all birthing people. We are at war. We are at war with those who would send us back to the Dark Ages, hundred-and-sixty years back. For those who are not aware, day before yesterday, Arizona State Supreme Court upheld a hundred-and-sixty-year-old law that enforces a near-total abortion ban. It is the latest state to basically spit on the rights of women and birthing people to have autonomy over their own bodies and well-being. Rulings like this continue to create a grim picture of the future for young girls, women, and all birthing people in this country. It is not simply a state issue. It is a national crisis and an affront to our personal freedoms, which are quickly being stripped away. Make no mistake, they're taking away our rights. Next, they're going to be taking away our voting rights. Next, they're going to make sure we don't read and write. This is a slippery slope, folks. We got to wake up, pay attention. Philadelphia is at the forefront of this. Last year, thanks to my colleague Jamie Gottier, Kendra Brooks, and former colleague Helen Gaim, they passed a package of three bills to enshrine these protections. And we need to lead the nation in demanding that our federal colleagues and federal government pass the Women's Health Protection Act, which would codify this and preempt the state abortion restrictions. We have to do better. And the reason why we're talking about it, even though Pennsylvania is currently safe with our governor and our slim majority in the House, is because, as I said, this is a slippery slope. We took off our ayes in 2016, and this is where we are. So I urge everybody to make sure you talk to your neighbors, you talk to your family, you talk to your congregations, to say, we have a solemn duty to vote on April 23rd, and then again on November 5th, to make sure your voice is heard, make sure you elect people who are going to protect our freedoms. So thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, council president. Again, I just want to thank all of you for recognizing Captain Massey, who is now deputy commissioner Massey, for all of the incredible work that she's done to really serve the City of Philadelphia. And under her innovative leadership, I mean, she initiated and strengthened a process for a lot of quality-of-life issues. And I look forward to seeing what she's going to do under the community partnerships wing as our deputy commissioner. So thank you again, colleagues. I also want to just briefly provide a couple reminders. Today, there's a legislative luncheon Thursday, April 11, from 12:00 to 1:00 in the city council caucus room right across here for chief of staffs, other directors of the offices, but also members, especially if you don't know big brothers and big sisters, it's really important that you kind of get a familiarity with them. So if I can get all the members that go to lunch right after this, and it's provided by the Capital Grill. Sam Staton Jr. is said to be there because I think he's been a big brother. So would like to see members to be there if we can. Also, we just did an incredible, incredible budget hearing yesterday, a budget town hall meeting that was led by our council president Johnson. Council president Johnson is doing a fine job trying to make sure that city council is in the streets. And so what does that mean, that we are hosting a series of town halls to learn from the viewing, all of the residents of the City of Philadelphia about what are your thoughts on the budget? What do we need more from our city on when it comes to fiscal items? And so we are doing a couple of town halls. The next one, City Council in the Community, Your Opinion Matters, Help Craft the City's Budget by Sharing Your Vision. It's going to be with myself and councilwoman Cindy Bass on Monday, April 15, 2024, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Martin Luther King High School. So 6100 Stittin Avenue. So northwest Philadelphia, come out in droves. We need to hear your voice at the budget town hall meeting on Monday, April 15, 6:00 to 7:30. Pretty much all of council will be there. It's going to be like a forum, but we'll come into our community, and we want to hear your voice, all right? We'll see you soon. Thank you, council president.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes councilmember Jamie Gardier.
Thank you, council president. I wanted to offer comments on the shooting yesterday at the Philadelphia Masjid. First, I'm truly sorry that the Philadelphia Masjid community had to experience such terror. And my heart also goes out to everyone in the Muslim community in Philadelphia that such a holy holiday was interrupted by such violence. I had been there earlier that morning yesterday, and it was such a beautiful celebration. It was a beautiful day. There must have been thousands of people there, families, kids all around, and just a joyful celebration. And so to have it disrupted and ended in that way just feels really unfair, particularly because, you know, I know that the Philadelphia Masjid community is a loving community. They're a peaceful community. They take care of not only their members, but the community around them, whether it's feeding our community, you know, making sure, patrolling the neighborhood, making sure that people are safe. So that community in particular did not deserve what happened. I want to thank our police commissioner and PPD. They had been on the scene yesterday, and that's why the shooting wasn't worse than it was. And I want to thank them for how quickly they were able to shut things down and even scoop one of the shooters and get them to the hospital and make sure that no one died yesterday. For me, the event just puts into light how much we still have to do on a local level, but also on a state and national level. I agree with councilmember Jones that even though we're trending in the right way as far as it relates to shootings and homicides, they're down significantly. If we can't figure out what's going on with young people, then it's off or not. And I agree that we need experienced people in our communities that know these young people, that can talk to them, that can get in between these beefs and these feuds before they turn violent. And I think it also crystallizes for me how important what we're doing, you know, during the budget cycle is, right? Making sure that there are resources for grassroots violence prevention programs, making sure that we have a jobs program for young people, making sure that there are mental health resources, making sure that PPD has the technology that they need to do their work. All of that is incredibly important on a local level, but we also need help. Because if there, you know, if these young people didn't have access to essentially our weapons of war, yesterday would have been a fight, not a shooting, right? And so I saw one of the weapons that were recovered was an assault rifle. There's no reason that a civilian needs an assault rifle, much less a teenager. And so in addition to doing our work locally, I just want to encourage us to band together to say enough is enough. And we need support from Harrisburg, and we need support from our federal government to keep these weapons out of the hands of young people and anyone else who doesn't need them. I also want to talk about a resolution that I introduced today on the land bank. So today, councilmember Ketsi Lozada and I introduced a resolution authorizing city council to hold hearings on the land bank. I want to thank our cosponsors, councilmember Jeffrey Young Jr., councilmember Rue Landau, councilmember Kendra Brooks, councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, and councilmember Nina Ahmad. And I want to set the stage for how the land bank was created in the first place. Ten years ago, the community development sector locked arms with city council to transform vacant properties that diminished the quality of life in our neighborhoods into essential resources for equitable revitalization. They recognize that making this vision a reality demanded creating a transparent, predictable, accountable, responsible, and representative land bank. A decade later, we have a land bank, but much work remains to make it the land bank our communities fought for and need. Philadelphia needs a land bank that is a reliable partner for community organizations and residents seeking to make meaningful change in their neighborhoods, is responsive in its interactions, predictable in its processes, transparent in its decision-making, and accountable for its outcomes, that proactively evaluates how the public inventory of vacant property can intersect with other privately-held vacant property to create opportunities for transformative and community beneficial development, and that proceeds from an understanding that preserving cultural and economic stability in our changing neighborhoods means prioritizing accessible and affordable housing, as well as community space for existing neighborhood residents. Like many of you, I applaud Mayor Parker's goal of building and preserving thirty thousand homes. A reformed land bank is critical to hitting this target because our government-controlled vacant land is the city's best mechanism to construct genuinely affordable housing for Philadelphians facing the greatest housing insecurity. But this land is also a finite asset. That's why this week, the community development sector is once again uniting with council to urge the land bank to realign itself with its founding principles. We call for a land bank that enhances staffing to improve response times and effective application review, views nonprofit and community-based applicants as partners and works with them to get to yes, eliminates barriers to process efficiency, improves transparency and accountability, and updates its strategic plan and disposition policies to better balance dispositions across a range of development and productive uses, including prioritizing deeply affordable homes for low-income residents in transitioning neighborhoods. Reforms like these are important for more than just housing. The land bank should also streamline the application process and dedicate staff to preserving unsecured community gardens and creating new open spaces. Urban farms and gardens empower neighbors to own and access land that benefits their lives every single day. The stewards of these spaces deserve the same level of transparency and responsiveness from the land bank that development applications receive. Councilmembers Lozada, Young, Landau, Brooks, O'Rourke, Ahmad, and I look forward to working closely with our grassroots partners, Mayor Parker, and the rest of city council to put our government-controlled vacant land to work for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes councilmember Jim Harity.
Good afternoon, council president, colleagues. Like most of us, I'm feeling a lot of emotions over what happened at Philadelphia Masjid yesterday. As a Christian, that would be the equivalent of somebody shooting up our Christmas dinner. When I first got here, we did a resolution calling on the state to give us the right to enact our own gun laws. to enact our own gun laws. This is not something new. This is something that has been granted to other cities of the first class by their states. And I get, coming from working in the Senate, that there's a lot of different areas in Pennsylvania, rural areas, where people hunt. And I have no problem with that. What I do have a problem with is a fifteen-year-old kid having access to a high-powered weapon of mass destruction. I don't think we actually get how lucky we got yesterday. If it wasn't for the quick thinking of our police officers, we might be talking about a completely different story. And, you know, while I'm praying for the victims of that shooting, I'm also praying for that fifteen-year-old kid whose life is now over. Most likely, he will get a large jail sentence for something that did not have to happen. I like to echo the Commissioner's sentiments when I say that you can be a friend to your child, but you must also be a parent. When I was a kid, I became a teenager, I thought I was smart, and I went and I put a lock on my bedroom door. When I got home from school that day, I no longer had a bedroom door. We need to get back to being parents. I have a twenty-six-year-old. I have grandchildren. I don't even want to think of how I would be if that happened. So for me, I think that our state partners, if they don't have the guts to enact fair gun laws, that then they should just give us that right as a city of the first class to enact our own gun laws, and then we will take care of it for ourselves. My frustrations build every day. Everyone knows, I live in Kensington. I'm so happy that the mayor is going to do our Hunter State Plan there, but as I've said so many times before, there are little Kensington's all over this city. We need a change. When they enacted the Second Amendment, it was in the seventeen hundreds. Weapons could only fire one shot, and then it took a couple of minutes to load another shot. The Second Amendment was never intended for people to walk around with weapons of war. I'm just emotionally distressed. I deal with this every day. I mean, the sad fact is, I got home last night to gunshots on my block. Senator Street got home last night to gunshots on his block. Now granted, I live in a neighborhood where that is common, and so does the senator. But I live there purposely. I do not have to live there. I live there because that's where the work is. We need to get to work. The state of Pennsylvania needs to get to work. The citizens of Philadelphia need to get to work. If you have a child, check their room. You know where their hiding spots are. Let's get these guns off the street. You can take them, bring them to any police station, hand it in, no questions asked. I'm not saying that you have to bring your child down there, but bring the gun down there. Get it out of your house. It is your house. You are responsible. And maybe that's the next step. Maybe we need to enact some laws to hold these parents responsible for not being parents. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, colleague Harity, for that beautiful speech. I too wanted to just make quick remarks about what happened on the Eid holiday yesterday, which was so horrific, and I would call on the state to give us the power to control guns in Philadelphia. All eyes are on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, as we do have a case that is still pending that would, that challenges the preemption law. We are, they're not reading it properly. We should be able to control guns ourselves, and we are just hoping for a good decision on that. But I got all hands on deck. There's, we should, this is state of emergency, and Philadelphia and the state needs to do everything it can. As far as my resolutions today, though, I just wanted to take a note, just a minute, to congratulate Jesse Ito, the mastermind behind Royal Isakiah, for his nomination as a finalist for a two thousand and twenty-four James Beard Award. Jesse's culinary journey is a testament to his unwavering commitment to excellence and innovation in the culinary arts. Following in the footsteps of his father, Jesse has elevated the art of sushi, bringing a world-class dining experience to our city. His nomination for the prestigious James Beard Award is a testament to his exceptional talent and dedication to his craft. I'm really excited to celebrate Jesse Ito's remarkable achievement and acknowledge the profound impact he has made on Philadelphia's culinary scene. And Council President, they have some delicious vegetarian choices there. Second is great to present a resolution recognizing and honoring Cacadium Circus School as the first accredited circus school in the United States. Since its inception, Cacadium has not only provided a comprehensive education in technical circus disciplines, but has also fostered a creative environment where students from across the nation can thrive and innovate. With its recent accreditation by the Accrediting Commission of Career Schools and Colleges, Circadium solidifies its position as a pioneering institution in the realm of circus education. I end with a thank you to my colleague Cindy Bass, who allowed me to cosponsor, co-introduce her bill to create an Eiru in Germantown, so that the members of Germantown Jewish Center will be able to more freely experience the neighborhood on the Sabbath. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, and thank you, Councilmember Landau, for your work and on the Eiru as well. A couple of things I just wanted to touch on, and Mr. Wheaton, who was here earlier. I went to his son's funeral. He was killed on his way to school at Gratz. And they have a very large family. It was a huge turnout, not just a family, but of other Simon Gratz students who really loved this young man. He played on the football team. He was very active. He was very engaged. He was not in any way, shape, or form involved in any sort of foolishness that we see so often in these streets. And he was killed on his way to school during what he was supposed to be doing. And when we think about, you know, just what happened yesterday, you know, listen, the person who killed Devin is likely a young person, and the people who were involved in the shooting yesterday were young people. And so I just really want to go back to something, a phrase that we coined and we say all the time, what do you do when the shooter lives with you? You have got to be engaged, and I know that Councilwoman Phillips, in terms of, you know, being engaged within the lives of young people, the young people under your care and in your charge, and not even necessarily in your care. But as parents, we know when there's a change of behavior, when there's a different crowd that our kids are hanging out with, you know, we have to be much, much, much more engaged. And I have to also say, you know, we acknowledge, I call her Mighty Maisha Massey today on her promotion, but we have to recognize, thank God for the Philadelphia Police Department for being on the scene, because I think that things could have gone so much worse if the police weren't front and center and present. So, you know, I just wanted to make note of those, those items, but I want to end it on a positive note. I'm looking forward to working with our new Deputy Commissioner, Mighty Maisha Massey, in her new role. She did a fantastic job working with her in the thirty-fifth, and I know she's going to do a great job now with her job in community partnerships. I also just really briefly wanted to mention that we passed a resolution today recognizing the Allegheny West Foundation and also the Nicetown CDC for their fantastic work in our communities. Allegheny West and Nicetown CDC are both my go-tos when I'm working in the community, when I'm trying to get things done, and we're trying to make things happen, and we work together as a team. I want to thank Allegheny West for so many things that they've done, including the food program, which is one of the largest in the city and most consistent. They've been giving out food since the pandemic started in March of two thousand and twenty. It started on Friday the thirteenth, I think, and then that following Monday, we were all out there when city call closed, we were all out there giving away food, doing things for the community. We were even making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and it was such a crisis, but they've been at the forefront. They've been building affordable housing. I can't tell you the hundreds of units that they've built around North Philadelphia to make housing affordable in the community, and not just affordable, but quality housing, so that, as our mayor talks about, affordable luxury, you know, the standards that everyone wants and should have. Allegheny West does a fantastic job on that. Also, they are instrumental in making sure that Panatty Playground is going to be rebuilt. It wouldn't be happening without Allegheny West Foundation rebuilding that playground in North Philadelphia, which is a hub for the community on North Twenty-Second Street. They were instrumental in rebuilding the T. M. Pierce School in North Philadelphia, which was loaded with lead and asbestos. T. M. Pierce, which was the first school built in North Philadelphia in over fifty years, wouldn't have happened without the Allegheny West Foundation, and we were working hand in hand very closely to make that happen. And beyond that, I could go on and on about the work that they do, but I did also want to mention their senior housing that they did just recently. They cut the ribbon on, I want to say, in late two thousand and twenty-three. I can't remember exactly when, but very recently just opened more affordable housing units for our seniors. Nicetown CDC hosts annually a huge Give Back Festival, bringing the community together. They've revitalized the Nicetown Commercial Corridor, built affordable housing, and beautified the area. If you drive through the area now, it's affordable housing that looks like quality housing that any one of us would want to live in and obtain a unit in. They're just beautiful, and the work that they've done doesn't end there. They clean and cut lots in the community. They work very closely with youth build, when we talk about involving youth and getting them in productive activities. And also, they are instrumental in making sure that Barrett Playground, which is in the Logan section, is going to be rebuilt very, very soon. So I just really wanted to shout them out, both of them, for all of the hard work that they do, you know, great community partners, and we need to recognize them because we have so much work to do, and we want to give them their flowers and say thank you to them for all that they've been doing. So, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. I think there's no need to repeat all the sentiments that my colleagues have shared this morning as it relates to the frustration and the sadness I think that all of us feel about the incident that occurred yesterday, as well as the incidents that continue to occur across our city. My question to all of us, though, is, you know, when are we going to turn our speeches into action? We have to do more. We have to step up. Each one of us on this legislative body are parents. I'm raising a young son, and I am afraid for him, right? I don't tell him that, but I am afraid for him, raising him in a city that I absolutely love. I love the city of Philadelphia, but I am afraid for my son and his friends as they try to go to school, to do after-school activities, or just to hang out. How dangerous it can become in a split second. And so I want to encourage all of us to really sit down and think about, what do we do? How can we do more? How do we turn our speeches into serious action? How do we shut the city down from functioning until our federal and state partners recognize that they have to come to the table? We have to do more. I'm ready. I'm ready. Let's figure out what we are going to do so that we don't lose another young person. I'd also like to take the opportunity and ask you to help me welcome Abdul Diallo, who is a senior and is with me today from Springside Chestnut Hill. He's my son's student partner. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today and for your interest in learning about how government works for you. We work for you. We need to hear from young people like you to tell us, what do we need to do to make the city safer for young people in the community? I'd also like to make an announcement for you, Council President. Council President is hosting a housing workshop this evening at South, in southwest Philadelphia from six to eight P. M. at the Commons Place, five-seven-three-six Chester Avenue. This is an opportunity for neighbors in the southwest to come learn about city resources that are available to you to help with housing-related issues, including rental and first-time home buyers' programs, assistance with tangled titles, and much more. Southwest neighbors, join Council President Johnson's office tonight at five-seven-three-six Chester Avenue from six to eight P. M. to learn more about these important resources. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Jeffrey Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just have a few comments. I want to join my colleagues, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, and congratulating Dawn Staley on winning her third national championship. As a student at Temple University during my junior year, I had the privilege to witness her greatness firsthand as the manager of the Temple University Women's Basketball Team. So I know how hard she works in her craft and how hard she works and strives for greatness. Also want to say how proud I am to have orchestrated the renaming of Diamond Street after Dawn Staley a few years back, and look forward to continuing to celebrate our North Philadelphia hero. Second, I was proud to stand with Unite Here Local Two Seventy-Four in their strike against Airmark for fair and equitable wages and benefits. It was a great day to see so many proud Philadelphians, proud workers, standing up for their rights just to make a livable wage and to, you know, fight for benefits that are human rights, I believe. And to make matters worse, Airmark paid temporary workers more than what they pay their regular workers, right? And to me, I think that's just, that's very disheartening. And so I will continue to stand with members of Unite Here Local Two Seventy-Four as they continue to fight for fair wages and benefits and equitable wages and benefits. Gun violence, right? We a hundred days in. On day one, I've been speaking about gun violence because this city, to me, that is our number-one issue in this city, and I'm going to continue to speak about the gun violence in our city, particularly as it affects our youth. And I'm willing to work with any and everybody on this issue. Councilmember Jones in particular, I would love to work with you on reaching out to some of these Muslim faith leaders so we can begin to talk about gun violence in a different way. I just know for a fact that there has been more genazis of young folks than there has ever been due to this gun violence epidemic, and I'm willing to talk to any and everyone. I'm outside on the ground, knocking on doors, talking to people about what can we do about curbing this gun violence issue. Just talking to folks, different programmings. issue. Just talking to folks, different programmings, it seems to be that there's no programming for our middle grades. Like, that is where we can really connect with a young person. We have to connect with them in the middle grades. It seems like people just forget, once they turn, you know, 12 years old, it's like, okay, you're on your own now, until you get to high school. And that's the problem. We have to grab their attention at that age, so then we can continue them on a path of positivity. And, Mr. President, along the lines of our budget hearings, we are having a community budget meeting with Council President Johnson on April 25th in North Philadelphia at the John Street Center. I'm urging everyone in North Philadelphia to come to this budget meeting, so we can talk about how we can craft a budget that works for you. This is your opportunity to talk about the things that we need in our city to help curb some of these issues, particularly with this gun violence in our education. So that'll be April 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the John Street Center in West Poplar. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I am confident that, and I've been in this body for a little while, that we will continue working together to move the city of Philadelphia forward in addressing some of the most pressing issues that are facing us. And so I'm optimistic. It just takes the hard work of everybody working together on these key issues that are impacting all of us. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I move that council stands adjourned until Thursday, April 18th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved and properly seconded that council stands adjourned until Thursday, April 18th of 2024, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries.